May I do the Water Utility first? Or I call the meeting to order? Afternoon, everybody. Counselor Hood, Chair of the Water Utility.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the, uh, this meeting was scheduled for 3:00. And we were, some of us were ready to go, but, uh, look, we, uh, we were short a quorum at that time, so I'm suggesting we adjourn this meeting of the Water Utility, which is for, considered the budget, and I expect it to be fairly short. We set that over and conducted at the conclusion of the committee of the whole.
Agreed. Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Record of attendance. Counselor McLeod, do you have a motion? Re-counselor Dennis and Counselor Cleveland, please. Move in the second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Declaration is conflict of interest. If none right now, we can do that at the time of the item approval of the agenda. We have any additions or deletions. Moved by Counselor Barry, seconded by Counselor McLeod. All those in favor? Aye, contrary? Presentations. Gloria Banks from Grant Thornton. Gloria with the financial statements. Welcome, Gloria.
Thanks very much. So you would each have a copy of the consolidated financial statements in front of you, and I can report that I met with your audit committee on Monday, and we went through the statements and the non-consolidated statements and the report to those charged with governance in, um, in a lot more detail. So I'm just gonna give a high-level overview today, but if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. So I'm gonna go directly to page one, which is the independent auditor's report. So it is a clean audit opinion. There was nothing that caused us to have to modify our audit report to you. The report is laid out in terms of responsibility, and paragraph one is the introduction. So these are the consolidated financial statements of the Town of Yarmouth for March 31st, 2018. It is management's responsibility for the preparation of these financial statements to set a system of internal controls as they feel is appropriate in the circumstances and to make sure the statements are in accordance with public sector accounting standards, with their goal being that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. As your auditors, it's our responsibility to express our opinion on these financial statements. We follow Canadian generally accepted auditing standards, so there are procedures that we must follow on every audit and be consistent between them. Our goal is to make sure that your financial statements are also free of material misstatement. So we are required to properly plan and implement our audit, and our audit is focused in the areas of highest risk. Obviously, those are the areas where we would potentially find misstatements. And then we also do things on a testing basis. We do sampling techniques. We don't look at every transaction. We are required to review your accounting policies to make sure they're appropriate in the circumstances, as well as if there are accounting estimates. We have to go through management's process of how they develop those estimates to make sure they're appropriate in the circumstances. So at the top of the second page, you can see our opinion, which is that the consolidated financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the Town of Yarmouth as at March 31st, 2018, and the results of its operations, changes in its net financial assets and cash flows for the year then ended in accordance with Canadian public sector accounting standards. We do add the one other item, which is another matter paragraph, because the schedules at the back are added for additional information but wouldn't necessarily be required under the public sector's accounting standards. And they are dated today, which is the day that we would hope that council approved the financial statements. Page three is management's responsibility for financial reporting. So as well as our opinion, management also has to sign a document which says that they take responsibility for these financial statements. So page four is the consolidated statement of operations and accumulated surplus. So this is a snapshot of the year, the revenues and the expenditures. You can see that there is a budget column. There's an actual column for 2018 and an actual column for 2017. And when we say that these are the consolidated financial statements, it means that is the operations of the town with their ser, uh, their reserves, as well as the Water Utility, as well as any of the subsidiaries that they have joint control over, which would include the Yarmouth Area Industrial Commission, the Yarmouth International Airport, the Yarmouth County Solid Waste Management Authority, the Yarmouth and Canadian Insurers Tourism Association, and the Yarmouth Waterfront Development Corporation. So all of those entities are included in these results. So you can see on the revenue cycle, the budget, you had set at $22,287,211. Came in at $22,812,308. So $525,000 ahead of your original budget. And last year's total was $19,119,212. So it's up about $3.6 million from the prior year. I'll just highlight some of the major differences. You can see in the taxes category, you're up a little over $400,000 over the prior year, and that was because of an increase in your sewer rates, as well, your de-transfer tax was up as well. And then you can see also in your, um, other revenue from own sources is up about $560,000 over the prior year. And when you consolidate in the Yarmouth Area Industrial Commission, they had a big project this year, which was the demolition of the Dominion Textiles facility. So they would have received funding to pay for the expenses associated with that. So when you pick up your share of their revenues, your revenues would be up as well. The next really large item is conditional transfers from other governments. So your budget was actually very close to your actual, but you're up about $2.2 million over the prior year. So when you do capital projects and you receive capital grant funding, it's revenue in the year in which you receive it. Even though you are buying a capital asset which you will depreciate into the future, you recognize the revenue all upfront. So in this particular year, you had one large grant from the province for your clean wastewater project. You received $2.4 million in grant funding. So that's the biggest portion of why that revenue line item is up and why your revenues are up in total as well. On the expense side, you can see that your original budget was set at $20,696,273. Came in at $21,072,238. So you're about $376,000 spent more than your original budget was. And last year expenses were $18,849,020. So you're up about $2.2 million over the prior year. Again, I'll just talk about the larger items. In actual fact, your RCMP contract this year was higher than budget and higher than the prior year. You would expect a small increase each, uh, each year, but this year you actually had a full complement of staff for your RCMP, so that's why your costs would have gone up. As well, in environmental development services, you can see that's where the largest item is, and that's the spend associated with the Dominion Textiles, uh, facility being torn down. So it's up about $1.8 million over the prior year. So you have an annual surplus from the operations of $1,740,070. The actual planned budget was $1,590,938, so a little bit ahead of budget. And last year's surplus was only $270,192. So again, that large surplus is really driven because of the grant revenue. You got in the door, but then you turned around and spent it again, but it is considered revenue directly here. You had a small gain on disposal of some of the assets, as well as a pickup in your pension plan. So your asset grew in your defined benefit pension plan during the year. So your total annual surplus is $2,44,541. You had an accumulated surplus at the beginning of last year of $70,674,750. So at the end of this year, your total accumulated surplus is $72,719,291. And so when we turn over to page five, you'll see that same number at the bottom, because your balance sheet and your income statements have to tie together and make sure that they add. So that is the accumulated surplus. So page five is your statement of financial position, which is your balance sheet, your assets, and your liabilities. You can see that we've segregated financial assets from non-financial assets. So your financial assets are those items that are readily convertible to cash, and you expect to use them to pay out your liabilities. Your non-financial assets are at the bottom because they are the capital that you've invested in, the buildings, the equipment, everything that you provide services to your residents with, and they're not available for sale. That's not their purpose, to sell, to generate cash to pay off your liability. So they're below. So you can see that your total financial assets are $11,479,057. Of that, 7.2, or $7,215,000 sits in cash, and that's from all the entities added together, not just yours and your reserve funds. That's money that's been set aside for the future, for future capital projects and future operating projects. You also have, um, general receivables, which we've audited and made sure that everything appears collectible. That's what we look for, to make sure that they're appropriate in the circumstances. And you can see, partway down that list, other receivables looks higher than last year. It's $1,546,903. And that's because right at year-end, you were in the middle of one of your capital projects, and you were able to set up a receivable for the work that had been done, and that was about $700,000. So that's part of the reason why that's, that's higher. And then you'll actually see the pension benefit asset is $695,891. So that's what comprises your assets. On the liability side, you can see that you have $6,771,827 in liabilities. The first one, we call it federal governments, $581,000. So that would be the fourth quarter payment for the RCMP contract. The amount that's due to the provincial government's $221,000, and that's your contribution to housing. And then your general payables and accruals, so that would be all the construction contracts that are ongoing or any other items that occurred at year-end. You have other post-employment benefits, so you have long-term service awards for your employees, as well, under the public sector accounting standards, you have to set up an accrual for sick time that they've earned. You also have deferred revenue of $1,579,000. About 1.4 million of that is the gas tax money that you've received that is designated for projects to be spent in the future. And then you have long-term debt of $1,766,000. And that is all the town's long-term debt. None of the subsidiaries have any long-term debt.
None of your subsidiaries?
Your controlled entities, the airport, all those organizations, none of them have any long-term debt.
And maybe Gloria, we discussed it the other day at the Audit Committee meeting with Counselor Barry, Counselor McLeod, Jerry, and Jeff, is the gas tax money, the 1.4 million?
Yeah.
Maybe Jeff, you can explain that we can't take that money, then leverage it with other money?
Yeah, they have a, what they call a no-stacking rule with gas tax, that if you get funding from other federal programs, such as Bill Canada Fund or through ACOA, you can't also apply gas tax to that project. So what you need is a project that you're unable to attract other higher-level, uh, sources of funding for that meets the gas tax criteria in terms of eligible projects, and you can use the money in those cases.
Good, thank you.
So the next line item is called the net financial assets. So a few years ago, when the financial statements were reorganized under the public sector accounting standards, it was for the direct purpose of being able to assess the health of an organization by that number, whether or not your number was positive or negative, if it was largely negative or largely positive. Your number is $4,707,000. So that's a very positive number, so that would indicate, uh, positive health for your organization. It has come down a little bit over the prior year because you did have the large spend that you had to do for your contribution towards the demolition of the Dom Tex building, so it's down a little bit. In terms of your tangible capital assets, so that's your net book value, $67,894,668. So that's your original cost, less amortization. So we depreciate your assets because they age over time, and they will need to be replaced in the future. So that's not replacement value, but that is your original cost less its depreciation to date. And you have prepaid expenses and inventory. So your total non-financial assets are $68,012,061. So when you look at the accumulated surplus, 94% of your accumulated surplus is setting on, setting in your assets that you've invested in, your capital items. So those are the two most important pages. The rest are supporting schedules and note disclosures. There weren't any significant changes in accounting pronouncements during the year. There were a couple new sections which you did adopt, but they didn't result in any significant accounting changes or significant changes in your disclosures. So I'm not gonna go over the notes in detail, but they are there. If you ever have any questions, you can give us a call.
Any questions for Gloria? Counselor McLeod.
No, no questions, Gloria. It's just a comment. I enjoyed the process, as I've done for the past two or three years, working with you in the lounge. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Hood.
I have one question arising from page six, just because I don't, so, uh, acquisition of tangible capital assets, so budget of $2,994 and actuals of $5,475. And I'm wondering what, because previous, previous year's budget was $2,464. So what do we, what do we do there?
So maybe I'll ask Jerry to help out with that, because that, we take that number out of your capital budget that's set three years in advance, so it's a possibility that there was something that you did that wasn't in the original capital budget.
What we do, and what could be part of that, I'm, I can confirm with later, but if there are projects not spent, we set money aside in one year, and if that project's not done, that money's still set aside, so we may have actually just caught up on some projects in the current year. Uh, the big part of it would have been Cliff Street. I think we had the Cliff Street Brown Street. I think we had some money set aside from a prior year for that one. So that money would have been spent in the current year. So even though we budgeted $3 million of the current-year money, there might have been $4 million in the fund to spend, like on that project, if you.
So it might have been a good enough answer?
Uh, as I'm thinking, I'm, I said I can confirm, but I'm pretty sure that's what it was, was the Cliff Street project money spent or set aside from a prior year.
So I can't look at a hard tangible thing that we did, like a sewer project or a...
We can, I can put one together to show what was actually done in that tangible capital asset number, the 5.4 million, as opposed to what the budget was.
And not that it would be a huge number, but also the Industrial Commission, the Airport Corporation, none of them would do a capital budget, per se, like you do for the town. So some of that would have been in, they wouldn't have necessarily had a budget for what their capital additions would have been.
So it might have been somewhat to do with maybe the demolition of the Dom Tex?
No, 'cause that's not capital. That was an expense. You can't capitalize when you've torn something down. That's a direct expense.
Well, that's why I'm asking the question. If it's capital, I almost think I've got, I've either got, I've got something I can go and see that's been bought and paid for.
Yeah, yeah.
What is it?
Do you wanna know what you actually bought this year? There's a detailed breakdown of what you bought.
The reason I'm asking is simple. We went $2.5 million more than budget. What did we get for it?
So the detail.
I'm only a layperson. I don't, you know.
Yeah, I understand. But the detail of what you actually spent is on page 18 and page 19. So the biggest portion of what was spent this year was the sewer lines, and so that would have been with your Brown and Cliff. So you spent $3.1 million in your sewer lines, and actually, there had been $600,000 left over from last year that also came in this year. So you spent, 3.7 million of that was the, the Brown Street project.
So just to be serious for a moment, so why is there such a large variance in the budget?
Yeah. So that's.
Don't we kinda try to plan to avoid that kind of thing?
Yeah. And so that's, that's a part, I wasn't part of your capital budgeting process, so that's harder for me to answer why it wouldn't have been the entire $5.4 million.
Anybody else got any questions?
Any other questions? Counselor Hood, again.
Counselor McLeod suggests over a two-year period. This is, the, the actual budget figures for 2018 are for the period from April 1st, 2017 to March 31st, 2018. Are they not?
That's correct.
One year?
Yep.
Thank you.
I think what he meant was that there possibly was a budget item from 2017 that you didn't spend, and therefore it didn't get rolled into the budget number, but it was available for the spend.
I would have thought somebody, I thought somebody would, might ask another question before I get too many more going, is, isn't somebody gonna tell us what it actually is? I'll leave it there.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, no, like I say, I can, I can find the numbers for sure for you, Cliff, on what makes up that difference, but I'm pretty sure, uh, most of it is on the Cliff Brown Street. We budgeted that for a couple years. So as we set aside the first amount and didn't spend it, we would have that for the current year, but it wasn't budgeted again. And part of it would be what Gloria said, 'cause I'm not sure about the Waste Park and the Mariner Center as well, like our share of those capital costs come into this, and they wouldn't budget a capital budget. They did this year for the first time. But I can, I'll, I can put a spreadsheet together to show you the difference there.
I don't know about the rest of it, but I think we should have, uh, I agree.
Anything else for Gloria? Motion to accept the consolidated financial statement as presented, and Jerry's gonna give a spreadsheet on the question that you asked, Counselor. Must be passed this at council anyways, right? Yeah? Yeah?
Move the second in.
Question? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye, contrary? Thank you, thanks Gloria. Jim, do we have a motion to appoint, uh, Grant Thornton as auditors again for the next financial year? Moved by Counselor Barry? Seconded by Counselor McLeod. Questions been called. All those in favor? Aye, contrary? Thank you. Staff report, C.A.O.
The C.A.O. report is on your desk in hard copy. If you have any questions, I will try to answer. And if you have a chance to read it later and anything occurs to you, please don't hesitate to ask if you have any questions.
Anything for the C.A.O.? Okay, Fire Department, the chief is not here today. Vacation, good. Operational Services report, Public Works, Chad. Come on up, Chad.
So the report submitted covers operations over the last couple of months, actually, and, uh, if anyone has questions, I can elaborate on any of the items.
Counselor McLeod.
Chad, uh, I'm looking at the first section, the first bullet, and I notice selected areas are for paving, new, two, with two new layers of asphalt. One of the areas is Albert Street, Main to William Street.
Yes.
I think every morning at breakfast, six days out of seven, I hear how smooth or not smooth Albert Street is. So I'll be able to report tomorrow morning that, uh, they're gonna get some new pavement for part of it?
Yeah.
Sometime this year.
Yeah. Uh, so next week, the, the milling phase will take place for these locations, and the reason why we've selected, um, Albert Street, if you recall, probably 10 years ago, we did a, we abandoned a water main, and we had to connect some services into an adjacent water main. So the crosscuts have been there for 10 years now, and, um, so Charles and I have talked about, um, using a little different strategy here that we've used in the past, so we're gonna, we're gonna mill and overlay the street as opposed to something a little more invasive like, uh, total reconstruction, as we did on, um, Lindley Crescent this year. And we hope to get maybe 10 to 15 years out of the, uh, out of the new asphalt. So that's our plan.
Thanks a lot. I'm just teasing a little bit, and, uh, I'm gonna tease back.
Oh, no, I've, I've heard it from the residents, and, uh...
Thanks very much, Chad.
What's the story, Chad, on, I, when I was coming in today and it was raining really, really heavy, uh, the corner of, I guess Parade and Brunswick Streets gets beat up pretty good with the construction there. How will they come in and do that again, or that's?
Yeah.
Responsibility of the?
No, that's, that's the, uh, that's the developer's responsibility, so the province will take care of that.
Okay, good.
We just need to give them a nudge once in a while.
Okay, good. Anything else for Chad? And the transit, the, the weekly ridership, that's just for information, right?
That's right.
Thank you. What about the new bus?
Um, I talked to Crestline last week, and the bus should be here in the middle of November. It only went into production September 17th, and they figured about two months, uh, to produce the bus, so.
Good.
Yep. So I've asked for, like, photos as the bus is being built, so as soon as I get them, I'll forward them to you folks.
Very good, thanks, Chad. Thank you. Planning Department, no report, Asset Management and Infrastructure Renewal Report. Charles?
Yes, Your Worship.
Anybody, any question for Charles?
Uh, Your Worship, I would like to expand on some of these, uh, items. It's the same report I submitted to you guys two weeks ago, uh, but there's just some highlights that I'd like to go over, if?
Sure.
If that's okay?
Yep.
Um, so there was an inquiry by Counselor Wade about the Fire Hall, 'cause we had some Fire Hall staff, or volunteers, I should say, at the last council meeting. But I went down, I did a site visit with John, the chief, the fire chief, and we went through the building, we went through the scope that was preventing occupancy on the second floor. So we think we have a handle on the scope of the project. Um, I'm gonna do one more walkthrough with Dave Winship, because he had the most visibility on, um, the Fire Marshal's concerns. So I'm gonna do one more walkthrough with him, hopefully this week, maybe early next week, and then we'll begin to build a scope of work and hopefully move to construction as soon as possible. Um, we have a tentative completion date for this work of spring next year, and as more details come in, we'll be able to solidify that a little bit more. Um, since, since you were just inquiring about, about the Brunswick and Parade Street corner, I thought I'd just cover a few highlights on that, uh, that piece of infrastructure. They had the road open for the tap, for the sewer connection and the water distribution connection for the school, for the new school, and, um, Chad and I were down there taking a look at the infrastructure. And we were aware that the infrastructure was in, um, well, it's old construction, but the construction type is that it's a stone sewer, and it's a combined stone sewer. So it's a little bit concerning. We can't maintain it in the same way as we can with a modern kind of pipe. So it was already high on the priority list, but after looking at the excavation and once we were able to have eyes on the actual infrastructure, we thought that we would raise the priority up another .5 level. So we're really gonna try and push the engineering phase of the Parade Street, uh, stone sewer replacement for this year. So we're gonna start that engineering as soon as possible. Uh, else? Was there a question with that?
Yeah, uh, Your Worship.
I, I don't know if I missed, what's this bulk water fill station? I don't understand it.
The bulk water fill station was a project where, um, we have a bulk water filling, uh, receptacle right now behind the Fire Hall, and Dave was looking at upgrading that in terms of, just so we can meter it, we can?
Gotcha.
Just better keep track of how much water's going through there, and he also wanted to, um, in some of Dave's notes, uh, he wanted to test out getting away from the token system into a card system. Um, if you're filling a large reservoir and you have to keep inputting tokens, it can be a little bit onerous. We've had some discussion on that, and there was a few inquiries about the price difference for the tokens as compared to the cards. And so we haven't made that inquiry yet to the vendor that Dave was looking at. So that's coming. We'll, we'll take a look at the cost comparison between keeping the tokens in circulation versus the plastic cards.
Okay, thank you.
Good, Your Worship. Counselor Hood.
Uh, Charles, the, uh, it's, on the same item, uh, the notes there, location is uncertain. So location on the site out there, or is it gonna be maybe another site around town somewhere? What do you think?
Um, to be honest, I haven't dug into it enough to contemplate an ideal location, or even if we'd be thinking about moving it off-site. Uh, right now, I've been reviewing the, Dave's file, and it's been mostly the, the vendor.
So it's in flux? So it's in flux that you're thinking about?
Yeah, yes, yes councillor.
Good. Anything else for Charles?
There was just a few more items.
Go ahead, Charles, yeah.
If we could, if time would, could permit. The Gleep Street parking lot and storage garage demo and replace, that's come a long way, so we look, we have pretty much a finalized design right now. We're going to be getting 90% engineering drawings very soon, and it looks really good. It's a two-tiered system. It won't be level like we have right now where the backside is connected to the front side. It'll be a little bit different, but we think that it's going to allow for better vehicle maneuvering, because the aisles between the stalls will be larger, and so we're taking into account things like walkability, accessibility of, of the lower tier, and just being able to still get up to Town Hall, but also trying to flush the, the new sidewalk in a little bit more strategically than it is right now. It's pretty rough, and the grade is pretty high in some areas right now, so we're playing around with the sidewalk alignment. I wanted to give an update. We haven't talked too much on the Stars Road multi-use trail intersection rebuild, and I've been trying to get in touch with Lotus, and I had one point of contact, I believe the lady's name is Lily, she's the owner of the restaurant, and we didn't get to have a lengthy chat, and I don't believe that she's reviewed the drawings yet, but that's still coming down the pipe. We're still trying to push that project and keep the original scope, and so that will require assistance from Greg as well with drafting a land transfer to the, the owner of Red Knight, as we discussed
Very good, Charles. Anything else? Thank you very much. Finance, Jerry.
No report. The quick update is, as you saw the presentation, we're done with our auditors for the year, so we're kind of in catch-up mode. I know that August statements are almost complete, and we'll have those out shortly, and just in time to start our September statements. Right now, working on some of the reports due to the province at the end of the month, so I got a couple of days to get those completed, and like I say, very shortly we'll be caught up and have financials out to you.
Good. Anything for Jerry? Good, thank you, Jer. Yarmouth Recreation, Mr. Grant. Hi Frank.
G'day, g'day. I apologize, I didn't circulate a report for today's meeting, but Recreation Department's shifted into fall/winter planning from our busy summer. Our facilities are still being used quite heavily for school sports. We've got school soccer, school baseball, and we have an extended season with our co-ed slow pitch league, so we're getting lots of use on our ball diamonds, mainly here in town at Broadbrook at Veterans and Mariners with the extended men's and women's co-ed league. Few dates that are coming up for big events, big annual events. We have Friday, November 23rd, would be the Christmas tree lighting of the, the tree in Frost Park on November, Friday, November 23rd, and we have Yarmouth County Athletic Awards on Friday, November 30th. So, yeah, Recreation Nova Scotia Conference is coming up at Oak Island Inn towards the end of October, and we'll be sending some delegates from our Recreation Committee this year, as well as staff.
I see, Frank, going down Carter, Jody Shelley Drive, and going down Stars Road, that the outdoor arena's still getting lots of use?
Not, and I was, I was talking about this the other day, not a lot of bookings, but a lot of drop-in use, which is what we wanted in the first place, especially within the last couple of weeks with minor hockey is just getting percolating, so minor hockey are having rep tryouts, so I think, I've heard that a lot of the teams are doing some workouts with hockey teams on dryland.
Yeah, it looked like they're doing like, yeah, positional stuff, yeah, drills. I was somewhere at a conference in the last month or two, and a gentleman said he had to stop and actually watch, it was a ground hockey game, a street hockey game going, and he thought it was quite neat, he hadn't seen one in a long time.
And the Jay Strong Street Hockey Tournament is using the arena for their final games on Sunday.
So they're going to do that on, okay.
Yeah.
Good. I think they have 19 teams, I heard?
19, they didn't...
Did they?
Okay.
Okay.
They didn't get as many adult teams as they had hoped, but 19 teams is a great tournament, in my opinion.
Good. Anything else for Frank? Thanks Frank.
I provided my report. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Go ahead, Your Worship.
How much space we got on Main Street, businesses want to come in?
Say that again?
How much space do we have open on Main Street compared to a couple of years ago?
We have about seven. Lovett Plaza seems to have a little retention, so we've got three there, the Old Met Building...
That's off-street, that's back.
Yeah, on the inside, and then really, it's the Old Met Building. We have new tenants moving into 27476. We have, we have some new purchases potentially closing that will make a difference, so very little actually. Housing is still difficult, and retail's becoming more difficult now.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to add that this weekend, although we have the hockey tournament starting Friday, we have over 100 visitors that will be here in the community representing the Nova Scotia Librarian Association, so if you see some librarians around town, please say hello to them. They're in this weekend, so I hope that they have a really good time.
Actually, I'll be representing the town on Friday, Saturday, because I'm on the Western County Regional Library Board, and Your Worship is doing Freedom of the City here on...
On Saturday, right?
Friday, Saturday, right?
So we'll have, yeah, so we'll have all those folks breaking down Parade Street and then stopping here, and, yeah, it's a big deal.
So we'll have a big weekend.
Yeah, so I think, I think the general, we've been, as I mentioned very briefly in my report, not unusual, but enough to make a comment in my report. In the month of August, in early September, there was a lot of activity with people inquiring relocating, not only to the region, but specifically they wanted to relocate into the town.
That's right.
So some of the things that were contributing to that was, first of all, they saw our video, and that kind of got them energized, so then, then they got interest. They looked at Facebook, and that didn't deter them. They went to our website, they saw the content of what was there. They were excited about the new school, they were excited about the programming around recreation. They were, they were then looking at the job boards, and they saw that there was lots of activity there, and I think in addition to all of that, they were very impressed with the different agencies and how we all work together to connect people. So that in itself, you know, has landed us a couple more new citizens buying properties, buying businesses actually, coming to our town, so that's, I think that's a good news story.
Yeah, good.
It's a very good story.
Anything else for Natalie? Thank you, Natalie. Business, Your Worship, yard sale signs.
I didn't write anything.
All right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry to counsel, I didn't have time to write anything up. I, I've gotten a number of complaints about, actually, one of them's from me. The yard sale signs, Jeff's laughing at that.
They're good at putting them up and not good at taking them down.
They put them up, they don't take them down, and you know what, Russell has, I, I think he goes around and takes them all down like on a Monday, but, but they're everywhere, and it's litter, and some of them are full pieces of neon Bristol Board on every corner that you can imagine, so just how do we find a way around that, just in a respectful manner, take it down within 24 hours or something, like I don't know what we have, but it's getting ridiculous.
Looks like the CAO has something...
I'm not sure he wants that out there.
We'll go to councillor Hood and then to the CAO.
I talked to Russell, the bylaw enforcement officer, about this week or 10 days ago, and, because I noticed a lot of them, and Your Worship, what rankles me the most is, most of the signs that I saw were for yard sales outside the county yard.
Exactly.
All right, yeah.
Yeah.
But I suggested that there should be no yard sale signs up unless you have a permit from the town, and the permit has to be issued to somebody with a name and an address and the responsible person, because if we're going to give a fine, I want to be able to give the fine to somebody that you can find, and other than that, I think we should get Russell out on Saturday to tear them all down. Or something like that, but I, I think we should look into a permit system. There should be a bylaw.
You had the bylaw, no bylaw? Okay.
Can we hear from the CAO what he's thinking?
I'm going to need a microphone or two.
So, oh, sorry.
Yeah, so, so we don't have a, we don't actually have a bylaw specific to that, to that issue, so, you know, if, I like councillor Hood's idea, thinking around, around permitting and having some provision in a, in a bylaw, so if you wanted to refer that, that issue to staff, we can take a look at, maybe see what other jurisdictions have done. Maybe there's a model out there that we can, we can emulate, and if not, we'll create, we'll create a new model.
Okay, so I'll make that motion.
You're going to have a comment?
I'll second that motion, plus...
You don't know what it is yet.
The councillor MacLeod pays for all three of them.
Yeah, I got you. Your Worship, turn on your light, and I'll give you a...
I just, I just wanted to say that, I just wanted to say that on my walkabout, I take them down on, on Mondays and Tuesdays.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead, Your...
It's very kind.
Yard sale outside of town.
So, so the CAO can help you with this, but I would make a motion that staff look into, what would be the word?
Yard sale signage?
Yard, yard sale sign.
And removal.
And removal information. Okay, thank you.
Moved by her worship and seconded by councillor MacLeod. Councillor MacLeod, I know you want one more shot at this, I know you do.
It's a shame that we need to do that.
It is a shame.
And, and I just, and I, and I just wondered if in, in your search for what, what we could or should, or a recommendation, one of them has to be, we shouldn't have to make up another bylaw, that has to be enforced, and I just feel that, that the people who put the yard sale signs up should, obviously, that same person should take them down, because that's who put them up.
Yard sales.
And, and I just, so I'm just saying that, I support the motion, but also at a certain point in time, I, I may not agree with perhaps a recommendation, if there is, if there is a bylaw.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Yeah, I, I agree with councillor MacLeod. We shouldn't have to, and, and we will hear after from the community that they're bylawed to death, but we're just trying to protect the citizens that are not doing these things. It's, it's as simple as that and as difficult as that, so I wouldn't even mind, once we get the information, if we, if we just went out and we made the plea to the community, but it's not, it's like we know, it's not our community, it's outside our jurisdiction, so I'm good if it's, if it's an easy fix. Thank you.
Thank you, Worship. CAO, one comment?
Yeah, just one, one comment, just to, you know, and, and I guess my thoughts on this is, I, I have seen in other, so the issue is people want to liquidate stuff they no longer want. They put it on their lawn, and they need to let people know that there's an opportunity to come and get some really good stuff on a Saturday morning, and so they put signs on where they think people are going to be traveling and might notice and find them. I've seen in another community where there's actually a section in the local newspaper where yard sales are advertised, and so what people do, of course, is they clip that section out of the newspaper, and then they go with it. They know where the yard sales are, and they can make their rounds, and so then, there's no requirement to put up signs. Everyone knows where to go to look for where the yard sales are going to be, and, you know, whether it's in a, in a traditional newspaper, or on a Facebook page, or someplace where people can, or even on a website where people can submit that information, the community knows where to go to look for it, clip it, and hop in their car and go enjoy the yard sales. That might relieve us of all that, all that signage mess, if, if people just have an alternative to know where, where the yard sales are.
Councillor Hood, I would... So just on the various points that have been raised, I think we all need to remind ourselves that our bylaw currently allows a town resident in a residential property to have either one or two yard sales per year. I forget whether it's one or two, and so, you know, those people have a legitimate right to do so, but again, they should also be responsible, as the mayor suggests, in taking, if they put their signs up for their own yard sale within town, they ought to be required to take them down, and there's only one way to keep track of it, is to require anyone that's going to advertise a yard sale in the town to get a permit. And then we know who it is, and we can deal with it.
You're going to come back with all kinds of... Okay, question. Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Accessibility Committee, are you doing that, CAO?
Worship, we continue to advertise for members of that committee, and we continue to wait for some resources from the province in terms of the new Accessibility Act and, and how they envision the municipal plans to, to look, and how they envision that process to go, so I, I don't think we need not jump into this, into this today. I think later this winter, we'll have more information and, and be able to, to deal with that, and plus, the opportunity for people to submit their names still continues, and so if people are interested in the Accessibility Committee, they can submit a, an application to Town Hall at their convenience.
Good, thank you, and that's on our website?
That is on our website.
Okay, good, thank you. Just to away my agenda, Greg, what'd you do to me, buddy? Accessibility Committee, what's the next one?
Tax.
Oh, tax grants. No FCI action plan?
Oh, boy.
You going?
Going over there. So Your Worship, the, the province has a set of municipal financial indicators that they publish every year and have done so since around 2010, and every year in January or February, we do a pre-budget review of those indicators, as well as some other municipal statistics. The indicators have evolved over, over the years, and this year, they do look a little different. We talked about this back in late January or February, as they were part of the presentation. Nothing has changed there, but there were some changes in the indicators, but one of the changes that, I guess is the reason we're talking about them today, is that if you found yourself in a municipality that had, I believe the number was five of the 13 indicators that were either yellow or red, meaning that they were flagged as cautionary in terms of risk, then you're required to... cautionary in terms of risk, then you're required to submit to the province by October 1st, a, an action plan on how you were going to go forward and how you were going to consider changes or actions to address those, those indicators. So we found ourselves this year in the situation of having six indicators that were either red or yellow. And so we now qualify to create an action plan. And so that report is due next week. And in order to prepare that report, I have a little presentation for you and I'll be looking for your endorsement or your direction in terms of strategy to advise the province that we're going to undertake. I do have a recommendation, but of course, as always, it is your decision. And if you disagree with my recommendation, then I will respectfully write the report to follow the direction of council's choice. So the municipal financial indicators, this is going to take a couple of minutes, you know, so bear with me and understand that this is all about, I have to write a report and with your direction and understanding. So there is, there is a purpose to this other than just boring you with statistics. So the municipal financial indicators, and this is what it says on their website, the province's website, there are a set of statistics to give an overall snapshot of each municipality to help you understand your performance, understand your key characteristics of your municipality, help inform your decision-making, and help community members understand the community in which they live. So this year, so as I mentioned, we use these statistics in our pre-budget presentation every year. In fact, we started using the indicators, I think before any other municipal government because I had access to the drafts and we started using them because I believe that they, they did give rise to an opportunity for conversation. So I do, I do think they've, they've led to some pretty good discussions. This year, what you see pictured there is the cover of the public report on the town of Yarmouth's municipal statistics. And they've done a similar report for every municipality in the province. And this year, more than any year, I think they've gotten red and people have, citizens have engaged and bothered to look at those reports. So in 2017, four indicators, four of the previous indicators, 15 indicators have disappeared and there are two new indicators. So changes to the indicators are as follows. First of all, the combined reserved indicator has replaced the prior five-year contribution to capital reserves and the five-year capital purchase indicators. So they've replaced two with one and, you know, I don't think that they actually show the same, I don't think there's any, there is some overlap, but not, not a lot of overlap in that, in that change. I think it's a decision to show different information, not to show the same information differently, if you know what I mean. So the outstanding operating debt indicator is new and it replaced the prior outstanding debt indicator. So outstanding debt is typically and most often capital in nature. That is no longer shown in the municipal indicators. All that is shown is outstanding operating debt. Prior, the prior commercial property assessment indicator was removed altogether. So we used to have a percentage of our tax base that was commercial and there were, there were thresholds that they thought were, were representative of healthy communities, whether they're rural or towns. That's no longer. And there were minor, minor changes to the calculation of debt service and operating reserve indicators. Okay? So this is what the indicators look like when they're presented in their booklet. There's a house and they, they kind of tell you that the foundation ones are kind of foundational. And then there are the ones in the middle that are kind of structural and the ones on the top, they consider, I guess, higher level indicators. Anyway, six of our 13 indicators are yellow and red, as you can see in that graphic. They indicate risk. That's what the, the province says, they're indicators of risk. The minister has requested of us an action plan and October 1st, as I mentioned, is the deadline. And what they've told us in the letter is that payments such as grant and lieu of taxes, equalization and gas tax may be withheld if they don't receive the report. They provide us with a guide on how to create an action plan. And that's a picture of the cover of the guide. So we've done a little bit of a scan, we're looking at trends, we've done some internal analysis with staff. I'm going to present you with some policy alternatives in terms of how we address our indicators and I will make some recommendations at the end, but again, ultimately you will, you will, we hope, decide. So this is what it says on the website about how to use the indicators. First of all, it says they take complicated issues and concepts and presents the information in a highly, highly summarized fashion. It's valuable information as part of the ongoing dialogue on broad concepts such as financial health and demographic changes. Data can help provide insight into how a community is changing as well as its ability to meet existing and future financial obligations. The indicators can increase awareness and knowledge of municipal performance. They can enhance understand, oops. Enhance understanding of progress as municipalities can compare their results year over year or with the results of other municipalities. They don't make that easy, by the way, to compare to other municipalities, but upon asking, I was able to get all of the indicators for all of the municipalities. Those are not on the website. However, the indicators should not be looked at in isolation as key details may not be included. That's on the website. So in isolation, they do however lead to their creation, need to create an action plan. Municipal, so this is also from the website, a number of the indicator scores in my municipality are red. Does this mean my municipality is bankrupt? The answer is no. It is a tool to provide a snapshot of the municipality's financial indicators. It's the starting point for a discussion rather than a final judgment, which we've always supported. I tend to refer to these as a nice coffee table book. They, they can lead to a very good discussion about, about municipalities and, and financial policy. It's not a replacement for professional financial audit and can only point to potential risk areas where further investigation may be required. They say it's designed as an early warning sign, meaning, suggesting that it has some predictive value. And it can provide a quick financial snapshot for each municipality. It's not meant to be a comprehensive assessment of performance for a municipality. So that's from the website. So we are going to look at each indicator, we're going to talk to you a little bit about each indicator. There's 13 of them. I'll try and make it painless. First indicator, so I'm starting at the bottom of the house and we're going to work our way up. The first indicator is reliance on a single business or institution. So the green box is directly from our house. Our largest single institution or business pays us 4.2% of our taxes. If you look in, on the side there, the kind of ugly graphic that I pieced together is our history from the previous five years. So you can see that the 4.2 is, is the lowest number that we've had. So our number for the town of Yarmouth is the number on the white background. The number on the gray background is what the average is for all towns in Nova Scotia over those five years. So you can extrapolate from that that our largest single tax-paying business or institution is smaller as a proportion of our overall tax revenue than the average town. That's what you can take from that. And that presents a lower level of risk. So as an example, the municipality of Geisborough has a single business that provides close to 18% of their total tax revenue. That puts them at considerable risk if that business were to close.
Or what about Annapolis Royal a couple of years ago?
Yeah, Annapolis Royal had an issue where they were receiving quite a bit of money from the power, power generation station. They changed the policy on how that money was distributed and they had become quite used to receiving a larger share of the money than they, than they ended up getting, caused them to have to make some layoffs.
Your worship.
So I'm, I'm just thinking, because you hear people without understanding say, you need to bring in industry, bring in industry, bring in industry. If you bring in industry and it leaves, takes the, how do I, the Arizona, how do you say?
You'd rather have 10?
It just, it just destroys a community.
You'd rather have 10 companies at 25 than one company at 250?
That's right. So that's what our rent is doing, building up what we have as opposed to bringing in something big that when it leaves, it destroys us.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so this is, we're agreeing here because, you know, it's a fairly low percentage. That number 4.2 is fairly low, which means we're not at risk if a single business, if that particular business, it would be significant, but it wouldn't be catastrophic. I think in Geisborough, they'd be very concerned if, if 18% of their tax base disappeared overnight. So three-year change in tax base, this is the, from my point of view, this is the most concerning statistic among the 13. Over the last three years, our tax base has actually decreased by 0.8%, almost a 1% decrease over the three-year period. And you can see if you look in the, in the chart, the ugly chart on the side, that our three-year moving average has, has been declining. And, you know, we, we do some things with, we do a lot of things to try and, and counteract that, you know, through our investment in the R E N, through Natalie's work, through the work we do around downtown to try and support our, our local economy and our optimism around our economic future. Optimism is what will, what will drive people to make investments, whether it's in the residential or in the commercial sector. And assessments are driven by, by market. So that's, that's a concerning number and perhaps the most concerning of the 13 to me. Residential tax effort. So this is what percentage, okay. So for the average assessment in town, the tax that would be paid by the average residential assessment, how much of the median household income would have to be used to go towards that tax bill? And in our case, it's 4.3%. The, and you can see from the side graphic that, that has been, that has been coming down. The, you can see in the graphic with the bar chart there, our tax rate is the orange bar and it's ordered from the lowest tax rate to the highest tax rate among the 26 towns. And you can see that we are number 10 from lowest to highest, so we're in pretty good space there in terms of being moderate in our residential tax rate. Our issue is that our median household income is quite low. And that is, again, one of those things that a, that a growing economy will help to overcome as people become maybe employed or better employed, able to earn a better wage, bring up the household income. That will help to, to overcome that. You know, one of the things about our community that is somewhat unique is that we are the only town for an hour in either direction. And so we are the, we're the center of, of retail, center of health services, education, many different types of services and entertainment. But we're also the center for social housing and for people who need, need that extra support. So our town has probably the highest rate of rental units as, as compared to total residential units in the province. I believe it's over 50%.
Forty.
Forty-three percent.
Forty-three percent.
It's subsidized, right?
Yeah.
In one form or another.
So that's, that's very high, but we are, we are the only town and the services that people of, of less means need tend to be provided in the center of government services and whatnot. So because there isn't another town 10 minutes or 20 minutes down the road, we, we have centralized that for a fairly large area. So we shouldn't be too shocked that we have a high rental number or that our median household income is, is low.
Shouldn't be shocked or shouldn't be penalized either, right?
Shouldn't be shocked, shouldn't be penalized. It is part of who we are. It's part of what, what the town does within this region. And you're right, we should not be penalized for it. And that is part of the explanation. And if you do, do the calculation, take our average tax bill and you, and you use the average or the median household income for the province, then, you know, we're well below the 4, the 4.0 threshold that would make you green. What drives this is our median household income. And so, you know, that is, that is something that we need to, you know, that's why we do economic development is so that people have prosperity, so that people can, can earn a, a nice living wage and enjoy the lifestyle that this area affords. It's something to keep an eye on and it's something to keep in mind when we talk about tax rates. But it, it, again, it's a statistic and it's something, it's an indicator, but it isn't necessarily the only indicator. It's something we should be talking about and we do talk about every year.
Go ahead, Counselor.
You know, this ties into something, your worship, that we'd had, that we were confronted with last spring. And so we had people, we had public servants employed by the Department of Health shoving us and criticizing us for not supporting a social housing initiative for all around Western Nova Scotia. Frankly, these numbers tell us that we should be telling the Department of Health, don't push us for any more social housing. We already have too much.
Your worship.
Yeah. And at 43%, we've got a lot. And, and it's not a tax base, so it's not making us money to pay for the services that we have to, that we have to pay for. The other piece, for me, is wrong?
Yeah.
If we get something back from the province.
We do get taxes.
Do we get what we would get in a normal house?
Yep.
No. Thought it was a percentage. Okay, well, that's good news. And the other piece that I thought you were going to mention was that whole child poverty piece, right? That's, that's why.
Yes.
It's not that, it's not what it looks like, but, but when, when things like this are put out in the public and when, when they put out the child poverty rate and we look really bad, there's a reason. It's because we are housing the folks that need it most. It's, it's what we do as a town.
So if, if our, now I'm just thinking out loud here a second, you know, if our geographic boundaries as a town were broader and we had more waterfront, lakefront property within the town, you'd have a, you'd have a different statistic, right? Wouldn't change the community in any way.
Nope.
Except where your boundaries are.
That's right.
But because we're a separate jurisdiction with a very small geographic footprint in our local economy.
Yes.
You know, this just happens to be the reality within that, that small geographic area. But our, our broader economy, the, the median household income in the district of Yarmouth and the district of Argyle are, are both higher. So people, you know, with, people with, with, in those communities, you know, there's, they have a lot of waterfront property.
Yeah.
And some fairly val, you just have to look across the harbor.
Yeah.
Right? At, at the type of housing that, that those kinds of views will, will, will attract, right?
Yeah.
And the fact is, is that they don't have the rental units that, that the town has. If you're building rental units, you're building them in town for the most part. There are some, of course, scattered throughout the municipalities.
Because of access, right?
For access.
People that need it don't have access to vehicles and things like that.
Jim, you all right?
How many times have we said?
You want to get going or what?
We must be talking about a nation.
We are. How many times, I'm just joking. How many times have we said, boy, I wish we had, you know, if you're going to do something economically to, to drive it up, it would be waterfront and oceanfront, right? It's, it's a goal line.
For sure.
Keep going, Jeff.
So uncollected taxes, you can see our story here, in 2011, 12, we were at 9.9% the threshold. In 2011, twelve, we were at nine-point-nine percent. The threshold is ten percent that they want you to be under. We were quite close to it. Now, in sixteen, seventeen, we were at seven-point-two percent. And I think Jerry would tell you today we're lower than that again. So that's been trending in the right direction. It's a green indicator now and getting better. And that's because we, this caused a conversation at this table about, you know, should we be three years in arrears before we go to tax sale or should we be two? Should we deal with these places where we had, you know, tens of thousands of dollars in taxes racked up that were never going to be realized through a tax sale? We took a different approach. We asked for much lower starting bids in order to get those properties back on the tax rolls. So a couple of policy changes there have helped this number a lot. Outstanding operating debt. Well, first of all, I didn't know you could have operating debt. That was kind of news to me, but this is a new indicator, as I said before. It used to be that there was just an outstanding debt indicator. So part of the way you can have operating debt, for instance, municipalities are permitted to loan money to volunteer fire departments within their area, and so that would be considered operating debt. There's a few circumstances in the MGA where you can have operating debt. We can't borrow money to pay, to meet payroll, that kind of thing. That's not permitted. But in fact, there are fourteen municipalities in the province that have some level of operating debt, which frankly shocked me. So the indicator that has been removed is the outstanding debt indicator. And that I always took as, as most debt is of capital nature. It's a degree to which you're using that capacity to fund infrastructure. So municipalities that might have had ten percent of their fifteen percent threshold, used borrowed funds to invest in their infrastructure, that tells you something about how much capacity they have for the unexpected. If you take a general debt indicator and you put it alongside your reserves indicator, you get a sense of what's your ability to deal with capital projects. Not one of those indicators on their own would do it, but as a group you could. Unfortunately, the general debt indicator is no more. So our twelve municipalities have operating debt. So debt service, our debt service costs are three-point-six percent. And you can see there that our rate has been generally trending down. We're up slightly and you're asking yourself, "Why are we up? We didn't borrow money." Well, it's because the debt servicing cost goes over a revenue number, and that revenue number has come down slightly. And so that makes the percentage a bit higher, even though the debt service costs have remained constant. So there are only four towns out of the twenty-six or so that remain that have lower debt servicing costs than the town of Yarmouth. And we are on track, not that we necessarily will get there or want to get there, but if we didn't take out any more debt, by 2023, the town would have no debt. Undepreciated assets, we are the second-best town, that's the good news. We're the second-best town in Nova Scotia in terms of the percentage of undepreciated assets. The bad news is the calculation is a bit flawed. So the calculation for this one is your net book cost, the undepreciated portion of your tangible capital assets over the cost of your tangible capital assets. And unfortunately, for us to maintain a sixty-two-point-three percent, we would have to spend just over five million dollars on capital annually. Because as you, so every year, in our case, two million dollars comes off the numerator, top number, because of depreciation. Well, just if you put two million back in to bring the numerator back up, you also raise the denominator by two million. So in order to maintain the percentage, we would have to spend five million dollars. So our depreciation is two million dollars, roughly. We'd have to spend five. So think about what we've talked about before. We fund our depreciation and we're the only municipality that does that at about two million dollars. We would have to spend two and a half times that to keep this statistic constant. So if you look at the right-hand side, you'll see it's been constantly dropping over time. Every municipality in the province, right, unless they've done a big project, has been following that same trend because that's what the formula does to you. So the graphic at the bottom here with the red circle, why I found that interesting is this is off of their website. So the threshold last year was sixty percent. We're second-best at sixty-two-point-three. They've actually changed the threshold this year. Now it's fifty percent. Can't help it trend downward, and so they moved the threshold because everybody's trending downward. So rather than say, "Hey, maybe there's a problem with the formula," they've just changed the threshold, so.
You address that, right?
It's in here. It will be in the report. And it's not like we haven't brought this to their attention before.
Jeff, on that one, do all the towns, I'm sure they don't actually, but do other towns have consolidated statements where the water utility assets and things are consolidated with the town? Do the revs, do they have the same system in the others or?
Yes.
You mean some have no water utility or little?
Most towns would have water utility, I would think.
They don't all have it.
I don't know that.
Well, they have small ones.
Yeah, I mean, our water utility, relatively speaking, is fairly big.
Well, it's, the net book value is fifteen million, five-hundred-and-eighty-two.
Yeah, you think, like, we're the fifth-largest of the twenty-six towns or so, right? So most of them are quite a bit smaller than us. They're one-thousand to two-thousand population. So their utilities are considerably smaller than ours. But everybody's required to do consolidated statements, so if they own a utility, they need to consolidate their portion of those assets.
So within the towns, water utility, the undepreciated, the accumulated amortization is five million, five-hundred-and-seventy-three just for the water utility alone. And that's part of what's driving that number, I think, is not-
Does this come from consolidated or non-congregated?
I think it's consolidated.
This is consolidated.
Yeah. All right.
Operating reserves, so we're yellow on operating reserves. They made a small change in the calculation here, which we didn't align our accounting practice with their change in the way they collect the numbers. So try and, so you have an operating fund and you have an operating reserve. You operate within the fund, okay? You pay your bills and receive your revenue and deposit it. Your reserve just sits as a separate account. You don't do transactions. You just do, you do transfers maybe once a year. When they measure operating reserves, they don't take into account any accumulated surplus that you have as kind of working capital within your operating fund. And so in order to maximize your reserves, you need to, at the end of the year, transfer any surplus into the reserve so your balance on your operating fund is zero. We didn't make that transfer, so there are hundreds of thousands of dollars that didn't get calculated in this statistic for us this year. So we're yellow and we might still be yellow, but just to let you know, we're a little better than this indicated. That won't happen to us again. And you can see operating reserves have been up and down a little bit on the graphic on the right-hand side. And our, we've discussed, it didn't come up today when the auditors were in, but we have discussed in the past, what is a sufficient amount of operating reserve to have? And Gloria's response to that has been two to three months of your budget. Budget expenditure accuracy, so this is just on the expenditure side of the budget. So four out of the past five years, we've been plus or minus five percent. And that makes us yellow. They'll let you get away with one year like that and you're yellow. If you get two years like that within a five-year period, you're red. And we've been red in the past. It's not much of a margin for error when you consider that if money arrives from a program, so let's say we apply to a Connect Two provincial program, we get seventy-five, hundred thousand dollars partway through the year, we match it up, we reallocate some money, we do a project. Only the expense side of that counts, not the revenue side. So they don't consider how accurate you were on the bottom line of your budget. It's how accurate you were on the expense side. So even though there's revenue to offset the expense, it only affects you, they only look at the expense side. So any additional expenditure beyond what was predicted in your budget is not good. So it's a bit of a one-sided view of things, but it is what it is. Same for everybody. This is actually the one, the one indicator, if you look at rural municipalities where they consistently have something other than green, most rural municipalities have either a yellow or a red in this particular indicator. And I can't explain why that would be, I can't explain why ours is. Deficits in the last five years, so this is another interesting thing about the indicator. So this is, they don't want you to have any deficits in five years. You have one deficit, you're red. And that's what we had. We had one deficit and you can see from this graphic, I'm sorry it's so small, but in 2016, 2015, sixteen, we had a deficit of a hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars. However, over the four-year period, our net surplus was seven-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. So you take the five-year period, we were ahead three-quarters of a million dollars. But they look at, was it above the line or below the line? And if there's any years that are below the line, you get a red. Doesn't matter how much it's below the, well, I guess there's a little bit of a buffer there.
There is, yeah. You can be yellow if it's a deficit, small deficit.
So a hundred-and-sixty-seven was too big. That's about one percent of our budget. Okay. Combined reserves, this is both operating and capital reserves. The combined reserve indicator replaced the five-year contribution to capital reserves and the five-year capital purchases indicator. It mixes both operational provisions with capital and it doesn't take into account surpluses that haven't been shifted in the reserve account. From my perspective, it eliminates two key indicators, particularly capital purchases, indicating how much you're actually investing in your infrastructure. So it's one thing to have money in your reserves. It's another thing to be spending money on your infrastructure. We have the undepreciated assets, and my comment here is just simply with a flawed formula on undepreciated assets and this kind of mixing of capital and operating on the combined reserves. It kind of blurs the picture in terms of how you're doing on the capital side. Sorry, I didn't change the heading on this page, but this is reliance on government transfers. So we get, in this particular year, we had five-point-nine percent of our revenue came from government transfers. And they want you to be low on that one, obviously, because the government doesn't want you to be dependent on them.
You looked at all the indicators in comparison in the province?
Yeah.
Where are towns in comparison with rurals, do you know? I'd like to know, I'd like to know that number.
With respect to which?
With respect to the reliance on-
I can't tell you that off the top of my head. I have a few charts in front of me. I don't have that one.
I'm going to write it down.
But I have it on my computer. It's open on my desktop right now and-
I'm going to write that question down. I want to know.
Sure, yep. So we're not, we're fine in terms of our reliance on government transfers. If there was a, what this indicates is our vulnerability, if there's a change in government policy, that, you know, we get less in equalization or we get less in some other transfer. Liquidity, this is your ability to cover your current liabilities with your current assets. And we're in a very good position there currently at four-point-three times. So we did a little, we kind of organized these indicators into kind of a SWOT analysis. And I guess the things to be concerned about are the residential tax effort, five-year budget accuracy, deficits in the last five years, combined reserves. I'd say our reliance on government transfers, although that was green. You know, I think that's always something to be concerned about because one change in government policy can affect you. Three-year change in tax base, we discussed, and residential tax effort. Now, senior staff did engage in a more comprehensive SWOT analysis exercise, which resulted in the formulation of six potential strategies to try and address those weaknesses and threats, which would be our yellow and red indicators. So those strategies were just do the basics. Let's get out of doing things that are not essential services. We could increase the tax rates. We could borrow to build up our reserves. We could not fund our depreciation. We could stay the course. Or we could take a year or two off in terms of investing in capital. So just continue to rate for capital, put it in reserve. So let me just walk through those quickly. The first strategy, just do essential mandated services. So we would save on areas such as recreation, planning, tourism, economic development, the arts, our community grants, investments in the REN, the Industrial Commission, the airport, ferry terminal. So there's potential savings. That could influence five of our yellow or red indicators. Cons or the downside would be we'd be relying on unelected leadership. So if we get out of all those areas, we leave it to the community and say, "Listen, if you want tourism, you go for it, but your town is not in that business. We're not in the business of economic development at all, the arts, giving out grants." Basically, we would be turning those responsibilities over to the community to figure it out for themselves.
Oh, sorry, Your Worship. Go ahead. Go ahead, Your Worship.
Sorry. Are you joking?
No, so what I'm doing here is, I'm not recommending this. What I'm telling you is-
No, no, I know that. I mean, I-
That's an option.
Huh?
It's an option.
Yeah.
So I'm just running through these quickly.
Yeah.
Good one.
Press the button to get him on screen now.
Yep.
That would have an impact on the quality of life in the community. There would be an erosion of social and economic infrastructure. And it could influence areas not captured in the indicators. So it could influence aspects of our community that we would prefer were not negatively impacted. Another possibility would be increased taxes. So the benefits of that would be it would generate additional revenue from existing tax base. It could have a positive influence on four yellow or red indicators. The downside, oops. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't change that, is it could negatively influence two red and yellow indicators and one of your green indicators. So the net there, I guess, would be a positive turn on the indicators. We could borrow for the purpose of building up our reserves. We have the capacity to borrow and it could positively influence two yellow or red indicators, those being your operating reserves and your combined reserves. Unfortunately, in order to do that, you would be paying interest unnecessarily. And you could negatively influence one green indicator. That would be your debt servicing cost, but you wouldn't do that to the point of making it yellow. So borrowing for the sake of putting money in the bank.
So why don't we just take out a loan on March thirtieth and pay it off on April first each year? That'll fix that one.
Again, there are many strategies and not all are the kind of strategies that as responsible trustees for the town, you would say are good public policy.
I'm just trying to be facetious.
No, and-
But I mean, I'm pointing out how ridiculous some of this stuff is.
Yeah, but what I find ridiculous is that we're halving, okay, well, let me get through it, but you're absolutely right.
If you took out a loan on March thirtieth to build up those capital reserves, it would look good. Then you would pay it off on April first. It would still look good. Could you take another one out next May third? Yeah. Well, I used to run my personal affairs somewhat that way. You would have to. Like, I never used to build anything in December. I'd build it all in January. So I'd have to pay tax for twelve months. Perfectly, David.
Paying attention, Jerry.
Shut that down.
I got it.
We could-
Well, not quite, but who knows?
We'll roll along. We could discontinue the practice of funding our depreciation. This would free up cash. It could positively influence all six of the yellow or red indicators. And it, undepreciated assets are not going to improve by the DMA calculation.
I think Worship might have a comment about the last comment you just made.
Oh.
Worship?
Shouldn't it be backwards? Shouldn't, in your report, you're going to say something like, we're not going to discontinue the practice of funding depreciation because it's the smartest thing we've ever done, and everybody should have to do it? And then the indicators show what happens when they do that?
I'll get to that.
Okay, thank you.
That's coming, good.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm just hanging on by the thread, you can tell.
Yep. So the cons are the community discontent. So if we stop funding our depreciation, investing that money in our, in our roads, like Albert Street, and, and putting money into our water and sewer systems, service levels will drop, and your customers will be less happy. And our practice on funding our depreciation is recognized as a best practice. And so you would be giving that up. We could stay the course, we could just continue to do exactly what we're doing. Uncollected taxes are falling. We've put over $40 million in assets over 14 years while on, on the path to debt elimination, which could occur in 2023. We have a very high rate of undepreciated assets, second highest among towns. Our residential tax effort is dropping. The tax base remains a concern, but we can be, we, but I guess the question is really, should we be a spectator? Right, when your, when your assessment base is flat, should you be a spectator and stop trying? And just see what happens, or do you want to be proactive, invest in economic development, so on?
But we're not a spectator, right?
We are not a spectator.
Because if you do the, in regards to the residential stuff, even though 43% of our, our units are subsidized, the proactive approach has taken us a couple of years of what we're doing with the high school. The Joanne Bernard Incentive Program for, for Yarmouth South, the laddering of taxation in the downtown core in apartments and the other thing, like, we're taking a proactive approach, right?
Very much so. If you look at Main Street, and, you know, it's something we should all be very proud of, you know, the downtown blueprint, although we've not taken on, we've not executed the, the biggest projects within that report, we've done the smaller things.
We've tried.
We, we, and we continue to try.
We've more than tried, right?
And we continue to try, but just the small projects and the success we've had with those have transformed Main Street, so...
And now we got Chad back in the room. I had a conversation with a lady the other day that was, owned a home for 38 years in the municipality, and lived there another 30. And one of the reasons she moved to town was the accessibility and the transit. She wanted to make sure it was running for a year or two before she moved to town, because she doesn't have a vehicle, and she has an opportunity to do her grocery shopping, get to the hospital, and get to appointments. So even though we might lose money on one side of it, people like John Daly and Andrew Cameron are investing in our community, right? So that, would that be part of stay the course?
Stay the course. Borrowing, just keep going here, borrowing capacity, we have, we have plenty of it, and, and that is what our, our backstop is. If we had a unexpected failure in infrastructure or a special project we want to do, we have the ability to borrow, to pay our share, and to service that debt. The auditor's opinion, which you heard, which you heard... You heard today, but the auditor's opinion is that, that we're, we're very strong financially.
Counselor Hood?
Just on that last point, borrowing capacity. I think if you go to page 17 in the financial statements that we just approved, the town owes, has long-term debt of $1,766,000, which some people would think it's a lot of money, but when you look at the size of the budget and our ability to pay, we have four years left, five years left. $400,000, $300,000, $300,000, $300,000 payments. And we have, if we don't incur any more debt, we have no debt. Imagine a town the size of Yarmouth with no debt. And just those, those numbers are based on three-figure loans. Public Works Building, which is due in 2019. Southeast Street, a huge expenditure to fix not that many houses, so many problems. And Brooklyn Street. And look at it, paid off in 2023 in our current plans. So our town is not overstressed. The debt, we do have, as COO said, the capacity if we needed to, to borrow money to fix an unforeseen problem in Yarmouth.
So the other, sorry, the other advantage, before I flip to the downside, the other advantage of staying the course is that we have, we have established and demonstrated a best practice that is followed by every water utility in the province. We've taken that and flipped it over and do it in our general operations as a municipality. The province, the DMA staff think that is an excellent thing. Unfortunately, that support is not reflected within the, within the indicators. The downside of staying the course is that our operational budgets have been getting tighter. That has led to some misses on, on deficits. We, as we saw in our indicators, we have a deficit within the last five years. It has led to some challenges on accuracy on expenses, but, you know, I would trade a yellow or a red on those indicators, and, and we'll deal with the tight operational issues. But we have to do our best to bring the tax base up to, to help growth, to facilitate growth if we can, and do the best we can for the community. We don't compare favorably with those stats against towns following a different approach. We're different than the other 25 towns. We do things differently, and so we don't look the same as them. While they can have maybe a few less yellows or reds than us, I think I would, I would much prefer the course that we're on than the course that they're on.
Think geography has something to do with that?
How so?
You have people that have good-paying government, federal and provincial jobs that live in places like Windsor, Truro, Bridgewater, Kentville, that travel back and forth, whereas we have, like you said earlier, we have a population that's older with incomes that don't grow. So when you improve the roads, right, which we pay for, you improve the roads, you generate traffic going from, like, I think the fastest-growing municipality in the province of Nova Scotia is East Hands. Right? The Kings County has over six, Kings County has over 60,000 people there now. So, so we're improving infrastructure in that core that makes it easier for people to go back and forth to work in Halifax or the Oatskirts.
We were, we were doing okay, and a lot of people were doing okay. 2008, 2009 was a rough year for a lot of places based on world econ, world economic situation. But what compounded things for us was the loss of the ferry service and the loss of confidence in our local economy as a result of that. It took five years to get it back. So we were, you know, just another statistic, right? But we had 12 fixed-roof accommodation properties in the town and municipality that paid into the room levy. Before that, we've got four now. Right? And, and so that devastated that industry. It, it affected confidence in the local economy, and now we've got some level of stability around that. I think we're seeing confidence grow, but that's reflected in your, in your tax base. So I, I often do a calculation of how property sales compare to the assessments of those properties that sold. And I can remember a few years ago, the number was like negative 17%, negative 17%. The average house selling in the town of Yarmouth, the average property selling was selling 17% below assessment. The calculation I did about two weeks ago was just over 4% above.
Okay, good. Cliff, you got a comment?
That's a positive indicator.
So I, I was, I might have sounded like I was being a bit reckless in my previous conversations about the March 30th, but is there any way that in a year that we know we're gonna have a deficit for some unsaid reason, like the one year out of five that we had, that we couldn't take out a loan on March 31st, uh, March 30th? Short-term loan. And to cover that until we got into the, the next budget year, and we paid off. And thereby save us getting reported on the report card here by doing...
Well, I, I, Worship, I don't think that strategy would work because of how they, how they eliminate some transfers. For instance, you couldn't transfer money out of, out of, out of reserve to, to do that. I don't think borrowing would, would achieve a, a different result. You know, they don't just, they, they, they look, you know, they take the, they make the calculations based on the financial reporting that's had, that has to go into a certain structure. So it is possible to game the system. For sure, it's possible to game the system. It's just, you know, you have to...
So what if we borrowed some long-term debt, say, $500,000 and called it a special reserve fund?
There's, there's ways...
A spec, a special deficit reserve fund?
What's Jim calls a pocket change?
It just sits there. You earn interest on it, you pay interest on it.
Pay interest, right? So that's, that's the issue, and that was one of the, that was one of the earlier possibilities. You can borrow money and just put it in reserve, and it looks good. But is it, is it the best use?
But a five would be, maybe in the range of 200,000, well. But don't put it in your other reserves, create a se, a special fund.
Yeah. There, there's ways to... There, there are ways, and Jerry and I have talked about this before, there are ways to, to game the indicators. You know, but I, I think we have more important stuff to put on. More, I mean, these indicators are, are good to talk about, and they're good to think about in terms of how, how we should act, how, what things we should do, what our priorities ought to be. But they're not the be-all, the end-all. They're, they're not things that we should be spending a huge amount of effort to artificially change the numbers through, through kind of bookkeeping entries, that kind of stuff. I mean, they are what they are. They're indicators. Let me, let me just run a little further here. Sure.
There's a law professor said to me one time, it was very helpful. Remember, Mr. Hood, rules are made for the guidance of the wise and the strict obedience of fools.
You have the same professor?
That's... I, I'm gonna get to my, to my summary opinion of the indicators and, and actions very soon, and I don't think you'll disagree. So we could take a year or two off in terms of spending our depreciation money. So we could just let it sit in, in, in reserve for, you know, let it build up for a couple of years, and then resume spending. So that would allow the reserves to build, it would reduce our budgetary pressure. We would positively influence many of our indicators, and we would be maintaining our, oh, sorry. Year, a two, sorry. I, I lost my train of thought here. Year or two off investing in capital, meaning that we not necessarily even take the money from the residents, that we not put it in reserve necessarily, but maybe we put some of it in the reserve. So we just take a holiday from funding our depreciation for a year or two. So you could, you could use some of it to bill reserves, you could reduce budgetary pressure by using some of it in your operations. You could positively influence all of your six red and yellow indicators, and you would maintain an intention to return to the best practice within a couple of years. However, the likelihood of actually returning to that best practice is, is very slim, given how tight the operational budget is. I can imagine that other things would, would become more attractive, and, and we would, we would aspire to it. I'm not sure that we'd actually do it. We would grow our infrastructure deficit, and...
You're just kicking it down the road a little bit.
What's that?
So you're just kicking the infrastructure down the road.
Exactly, and, and it would be a short-term gain, because as soon as you reverted back to funding your depreciation, I believe that you would, you would start to, to experience some other difficulties with these indicators. So just step back for a second, and this is a question that, that I don't know that there's a clear answer to. Not within the indicators, not in the indicators report, and that is, what is a successful town? Is a successful town a town that has 13 green indicators, or is there more to it than that? Are there things that aren't captured within this group of indicators that are part of being successful? Does having 13 green indicators mean that you'll be successful in 10 years or 20 years? Is there any predictive validity to them? They say they're an indicator of risk, but, and, and to some degree, they are indicators of certain risks. But that is to suggest that there is a predictive value to them, and that hasn't been proven. There is no, no proven statistical validity or reliability that they, they actually consistently measure what the province thinks they, they're measuring in terms of prediction, predicting success or failure, and they're not shown to be reliable across municipalities and over time. So the suggestion would be is that the indicator group, the committee, should undertake a research project that would look at, at these statistics and maybe 50 others. Look at municipalities across Nova Scotia, we know there's been a few towns that have failed. So look at their financial history, calculate their statistics 10 years prior to failure, 20 years prior to failure. Where are the indicators that consistently across those cases predicted or would have, should have predicted their failure? Look at cases that you consider successful, and, and look at their indicators 10 years ago, 20 years ago. Would they have, are, are those indicators also predictive of success? I think there's a whole project there that could be done that could result in, in a lot better set of indicators than these. These have gone beyond a communication tool, that's where they started out, but the, by the minister writing the letter and requiring an action plan on the basis of, of these indicators takes them beyond a communication piece to becoming a weapon. So the minister, in the last, if you remember back to fiscal review process, Department of Municipal Affairs suggested that if you had so many indicators that were colored over so many years, that that would trigger a, a structural review process. So this is where that's heading. This is coming back in that train of thought, that, that Department of Municipal Affairs will use these statistics to trigger their own aspirations around municipal reorganization. So the recommended action plan is to stay the course. To monitor indicators annually, monitor strategies that we use to intend, that we intend to impact on those outside indicators, and adjust our strategies based on success or failure. We could consider moderate changes of tax rates to offset flat tax assessments, but that's something we discuss every year in Budget Time. We should be advocating for a scientific method of determining indicators rather than the consensus method. So the current method is, is that CAOs, a group of CAOs, a group of politicians, and a group of DMA staff sit, review these things, discuss them, and whatever they can all agree to becomes the, the indicators. And as we've talked about, some of them, the formulas don't, don't work, and some of them, there are gaps, for sure, in the information they convey. We should advocate for a new practice rather than the best practice of, of what exists today. We should be looking at, at finding those, those statistics that are truly predictive and valid and reliable, and not simply rely on the things that we've done over and over. We do things differently in the town of Yarmouth. I think we're focused in the right direction. That isn't the same direction as everybody else, but I don't think that we should be looking to conform with a practice that we know is, has led to the infrastructure deficits that we, that we have. I think we need to aspire to a different, a different set of, of goals and objectives, and so far, we've been doing that, and so the recommendation is to stay the course.
At the, after everything is said and done, and Counselor Berry was there, and Counselor McLeod, and myself, and the CAO, and the Chief Financial Officer, and we asked Gloria the question in relation to financial indicators, and the consolidated financial statement, and her words were, what, Jeff? I said, compared to the financial, like, and we went through some of the indicators. And what did she say? She said, if you're, if you're a business or, or a town, Jim, she said, she had a smiley face next to her, her, her numbers. She said, we're in great position.
Yeah, the, the net financial assets number is the one they watch, and we're looking very good on that. That's not a surprise to us, that's where her smiley face was. very good on that. That's not a surprise to us. That's where her smiley face was. I asked her the question, you know, "As our auditor, how are we doing?" And she said, "Very good." You know, they, they audit most of the municipalities in, in the province. That particular branch, most in Western Nova Scotia, they know what the others, what the books look like in, in the other municipalities, and, and, you know, unfortunately, the province has moved to, to a, to this set of, of indicators in, instead of looking closely at the financial statements and the strategies as a whole.
So how does it work, Jeff, when you send in the action plan? Do you talk to our municipal advisor and sit with somebody from the Department of Municipal Affairs and say, "This is, this is what we've got. This is what we're going to do, and we disagree with some of your indicators, and this is the reason why, or this is, this is what happened, and this is what we're going to do?"
So ironically, the week that I got the email from our municipal advisor letting me know that we would have to prepare an action plan ahead of the minister's letter.
Actually, I think that might be a good thing, to do the action plan.
Well, so the week I was notified of that was the same week that I presented to NSFM on our financial best practice. And my question to him was, "How can this be? How can it be that we're being penalized by the department on the same week that we're being asked by our peers to, to present on exactly how do we achieve this best practice on the financial side?" And he, he agreed. He, you know, he knows what we do. He talks to his colleagues within the department, and he has that same discussion on our behalf. So we need to put this information, well, first of all, you have to decide if you agree with the stay of the course. If you do, then the information that was conveyed in this presentation will be all incorporated within that report for the minister. The kinds of, kinds of strategies that, that Councillor Hood was alluding to, that will be addressed within the report.
Can you achieve that by, on page seventeen? Can you achieve that on page seventeen by nineteen, eighteen, seventeen? Can you achieve that, Jeff, by taking that money that we've paid down the debt on and putting that in reserves, like the four hundred thousand this year, the three, 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 three? Is that one of the ways? Like taking what we're paying for debt, debt repayment, what we're paying for debt repayment, and put that in the reserves?
Would you postpone paying one or all of those, you know, land debt that you're paying?
No, you can't, you can't, those are, they're bonds, yeah. You participate in that, yeah.
Your worship has a comment, then Councillor MacLeod.
I don't, what did we get to?
Stay the course.
Stay the course?
Yeah.
Okay.
You got a moment?
Uh, no, I just wanted to say a couple of things. Probably already said them to Jeff. Uh, yeah, we need to stay the course. But we need to stay the course and send a message to the province about just what you were saying, that we're providing best practices, and, and they need to maybe tweak what, how they're doing things or what they're doing, as good information, right, as, as a, as a kind gesture of help. Okay? For, for us, I'm just going to put it out there. I don't base my decisions on how much grief we get from, from our decisions, but, but the, the public sees it and they react. So, so it's out there, and, and remember, and I'm seeing Diane here, but, but you're one person. Like, we don't know how many people see this, right? So when you see it, you understand we're doing really well. But when you put a house out there with a bunch of reds in it, the public panics. And, and we're doing such great things that it's, it's important that we, we help the province understand that when it goes out, it needs to be qualified, or we have to qualify it. You're going to respond to that one first, or are you just moving?
Yes.
Okay. That it's not apples to apples, but it's somewhere it's covered in there, that, that we have to make sure that.
Yeah, we're different. We look different because we're different.
That's right. We're different, and, and we're, and we're good. Yeah. And when you were going through the other ones, I just jotted down, you know, like when you were saying about tourism and economic development and all those things. If, you know, I've said before, and I've gotten in trouble, if, if the town of Yarmouth did our job, we'd make sure that when you go home, you can drink water and flush the toilet out of two different sources, and when you drive home, it's on a reasonably paved street with streetlights. That's it. And then we just close the book, and that's all we do. But, but Jeff, the way you frame the difference between council is, is the values versus the services. And the, the value and the quality of life far outweighs just providing services. We want quality of life. We want tourism. We want economic development. We want, we just want all of those pieces. And, and it's important that we, that we do that. So, so I hope that, that in the recommended action plan, and I'm sure it'll be the case, that we help them understand that we're doing well, that, that we also look where we can do better. But if we're doing the right thing, we have to try to sell that to the province.
So if I can respond to that, may I?
Yeah, you go right ahead and respond.
Thank you. So two things. First off, I've volunteered my time that you pay for to be on the indicator committee. There were positions available for two CAOs, two members of AMA, and so I, I did volunteer for that, and AMA appointed me to, appointed me, gave me that privilege. So I'll get to have a voice at the committee level. We'll see if it makes a difference. The other thing, just historically, you know, when these indicators started, I can remember meeting Jerry and I, meeting with our municipal representative, and, you know, we, we had a little confusion over the indicators, because they didn't quite look the way we thought they would. And what they told us is, is that they calculated ours differently than all the other towns, because they didn't want to make the other towns look bad.
Yeah, right.
Right? And so since then, there's been changes in terms of how they've considered, how they deal with the depreciation and so on, and, and, you know, they cal-, I'm sure they calculate us the same as they calculate everybody else now, but the way they deal with transfers and that. You know, we had an operating deficit, according to their statistics, but, you know, we, we were transferring two million dollars into, into capital reserve. So we didn't have to have an operating deficit, right? We made a different choice. We made a choice to, to maintain operations at a certain level. We covered that with surplus from the four other years within that five-year period. That was not a, you know, we didn't panic over that. We didn't change course. We just, you know, we had a, we had a slight miss, and, and we moved on. Yeah, that's, that's all, I guess, is that, is that part of, part of the dilemma that they have at the provincial level with these indicators is they want to be able to have people discuss and compare their municipal performance, but then they don't want anybody to look bad, right? So it, that was from, that was from day one. And so now, through discussion among the people, you know, they get consensus over what, what the indicator should be, what the threshold should be, and, you know, some people, I guess, are comfortable with, with these. And I frankly don't mind what the, what color these indicators are, if we know within this room that we're doing the right things for our citizens.
Yes. And we do know, we do know.
Yeah. And unfortunately, you know, because they do such a nice job with the communications piece now, this year more than any other, you know, we've, we've heard from our citizens concern. Now, if they hadn't changed the indicators, and Jerry had a, a piece of paper he, he sort did this work on, if they hadn't changed the indicators, we would have had three colored indicators this year out of fifteen. Instead, we had six out of thirteen, because of the change they made. Now, there were other municipalities, many other municipalities, who had fewer colored indicators with the changes.
It's like the wrong schools.
Well, it, it, it's about, it's about, it's about what is the norm, and how far are you from the norm? And frankly, we are a fair distance from the norm, because we do things differently.
Councillor MacLeod.
Thank you very much, Jeff. I support the comments that have been made, and I want to stay the course. One of my questions, or my only question right now, I'll think of some more later. I don't want to compromise if we want to fund a project, and we need federal and/or provincial monies. I don't want our financial conditional indicators to be a roadblock. And, and they shouldn't be, but I, I don't want them to be.
Yeah. So these, this is purely a provincial initiative. It has nothing to do with the federal government. You know, at the point that they, I'm a little concerned that they kind of weaponized it a little bit by having us have to do a report. I think everybody should do a report. You know, I think the indicator should change as well, but I would be very concerned if they went any further than what the minister said in his letter, which was that it may delay your transfer payments. Anything further than that is, you know, I think he, he needs to understand how these statistics are arrived at, you know, that, that what they actually tell, what is the validity of these things on which he's basing fairly significant decisions on, when he says it may delay transfer of over a million dollars to the town.
I tend to agree with Cliff's comment a moment ago, you know, is that, why can't we set a standard? Why do we need to wait for the municipal affairs to set a standard? Why can't we set a standard? It's much like our comment that Cliff and I make to each other occasionally about our environmental standards, in the, you know, in relation to Lake George and other areas. So I, I just feel like it's wrong, and, and I'm fighting City Hall somewhere, wherever City Hall is. Thanks very much for your, I appreciate and applaud your effort, and you have my one hundred and twenty-five percent support.
Thank you, Jim.
Your worship.
Yeah, you have my support as well. I, I just didn't like the, I didn't like the fact that they would hold back money from us. Like, we, you guys know I spent the morning with the Liberal and PC caucuses, just having a chat for a minute, stuff, Ben. Property, yeah, in New Brunswick. Property taxes in the province that come in from municipalities, one point two-three billion. And out of that, the property taxes that are transferred to the province, two hundred and forty-six million. And they might hold back because we don't write a report.
Ain't going to happen.
Sorry. It won't. I'm just saying, it's just doesn't.
My name. I just dug up, we previously circulated, we got a, a big, long thing from the Municipal Finance Corporation, and here it lists the outstanding loans of all the towns in the province. So the town of Anatlas, which is the smallest town in this province, five hundred odd people, has a principal debt of three million and thirty-five thousand dollars outstanding with the municipal. Yarmouth has two million seven hundred with six thousand six hundred people.
That's right.
And I could keep going, how ridiculous it is. We're one of the lowest debts owed to the Municipal Finance Corporation. I can dig stuff up pretty quick. There it is. From the Municipal Finance Corporation of the province, the entity that does the lending on our behalf. Want another example? Chester. The village of Chester owes seven million and a half dollars compared to three million dollars in Yarmouth.
Chester's a little bit different in that, I think a lot of their, I think a lot of their debt is related to a, a large-scale wind project they did, and so they've got a revenue stream tied to that.
They got some revenue from that.
They're still going to pay it back.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to accept the action plan?
Yes.
Moved by Councillor MacLeod, seconded by Councillor Berry. Any other questions or comments? Call for the question. Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, thank you, Jeff?
Thank you, counsel.
Shelburne only owes thirty-five thousand dollars.
How does Shelburne? You doing the tax grants, or is that for the, Jerry has that one? Jerry, tax grant. Property tax grants over budget.
Yeah. So each year, we, I guess, you do your spreadsheet, and we allocate or decide on the tax grants for the different charities. And this year, I guess, with, with doing them so early, I guess, is where I've come up with the, the reason why this happens, is that we've actually have granted fifty-one hundred dollars more than what we'd budgeted. So a couple of things to, a couple of options here. One is to leave that as is, and we'd have the line as an over budget. We could reduce all the grants. None of, none of the charities are getting a hundred percent of what they asked for, so we could reduce them all by an equal portion of one point seven percent. So you'd reduce some grants by fifty dollars, and the two larger grants by sixteen hundred dollars, to come up with the fifty-one hundred dollars. Or if you had one or two charities that you thought the grants were too high, you could pick one or two and allocate them how you want it.
You're better off spreading the pain, right?
But I was just looking at, my recommendation would be to share it equally, since none of them are getting full grants anyway. It just means y'all get a little bit less.
You going to make that a motion, your worship?
No, I might make an emotion. I might make an motion after I understand it. I thought we, we had so much in the budget, but then we had like a contingency fund, but we didn't.
This is on the tax part.
No, this is on the property taxes.
Oh, the property taxes. Yes.
Yeah.
We knew it was going to catch up. We had that discussion before. We knew it was going to catch up.
And it's not a hundred percent, because I never give a hundred percent.
Right. So what I'm recommending is, like, we get through this, if we can today. Taxes are due, and they're looking for their grant checks. But in the future, we can do these grants after we set the operating budget, in even February-ish, because by then, we've set the tax rate, and we have, from PVSC, we know the assessments as well. So we know the exact taxes that they will be due at that point.
We, did we not have a, a basic, start a basic conversation with regard to perhaps sending out letters, letting them know that they're, you know what I mean? Like, we, we need to give these organizations a heads up, that they're not going to get a hundred percent, or at least that was my thinking. You just don't, you know.
Yeah, I don't think they got a hundred percent in the last couple of years. It's just been a little bit short.
Well, yeah, because I just go in ninety-five, ninety-eight.
But we, we've talked, yeah, we've talked about sending them letters, so, you know, in the future, we're going to be getting less and less. So I think that was.
You have to really have a hard council conversation about how we're going to do it, because, right?
So Jerry, what is your recommendation today?
My recommendation today is to spread the five thousand dollars of pain equally to everybody on a percentage basis. So it's, everyone's grant will be reduced by one point seven percent. So like I say.
You going to make that a motion, Councillor MacLeod?
Yeah. I'll second it.
Second. Your worship, we have another comment? Councillor Hood? You got your light? You good?
Yes.
Okay. Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, thank you. Correspondence for Action, Yarmouth Food Bank Society Re-edition, CAO?
Your worship, at the last council meeting, council expressed, we talked a little bit about the fence request and the possibility of expansion at the food bank, which they had expressed but not put to writing. So this is intended to provide clarity to council on what their desires are with respect to expanding their facility.
So what's, if they, so they want to do this, right? So what's the next step for, for the food bank? They have to go to the PAC? Is it already, we own the property. What's the stories, Jeff?
So I, I think the first basic question is back to you as owners. Are you okay with that? Are you okay with them investing in addition to your property? If you are okay with it in principle, then the devil will be in the details in terms of how does that affect them as a tenant, and what happens if their lease isn't renewed at some point? And, you know, there is the, the, obviously, the land use bylaw comes into play here in terms of setbacks and, and whatnot. But I think the first basic question is, are you okay with that?
Have your line on councillor, or is that, no, councillor Berry, then councillor Hood?
I guess the question would come with call.
Yes, the question would come with the cost and who's paying, who's picking up the tab for any kind of restructure or rebuilding? Would that fall back on us as taxpayers? Or is it gonna be somebody else who's using our facility? Would somebody have an answer to that?
Cliff, give me your light for one second. I'll go ahead.
Just, just on the cost question. I visited the food bank, and Reverend Newell showed me around and gave me an idea on-site what they were planning or hoping to plan. And he did mention in that conversation that they, that they had the money or were going to raise the money, one or the other. I can't recall, but there was no expectation, no indication to me that they would be asking us to pay for that addition.
Counselor Hood.
I'm not comfortable with this, your worship, and I'll tell you why. When we initially went into this, some of us, I think, had reservations about it. But Reverend Newell's a very persuasive advocate for a very needed charitable institution in the town, the food bank. And to some extent, I felt that Reverend Newell, in his enthusiasm to get the pro, the project up and going, pitchforked the town into a difficult situation when the, the building went ahead before it was approved by the zoning department. Never, never was it suggested that there would be an expansion of the scale of that property. And we did, I think, out of respect for some of the problems brought to us by adjoining landowners, suggest that we're gonna build a fence to create a visible barrier between them. This doesn't create that kind of a barrier. This creates, this is, this is not a small, this is a good-sized. I think this might be bigger than the building itself. Forty by?
Forty by, 16 by 40?
16 by 40. It's certainly very close in size. Lengthwise, anyway. So, you get pushed into these situations sometimes, and I don't think it's, I don't think, I'm not ready to support it.
I think we need, go ahead, your worship.
One thing is neighbors, just a consideration, but I agree.
Counselor Berry had a valid point. We need more information. We need, you know, you can, you can look at 16 by 40 and say, well, that's big or not smaller, the same size. But then you have to go up there and actually maybe draw it out to see what you're getting. Then what about the fence is gonna be? Talking about a fence, and then they're talking about small garage, and then, and, you know, we thought that stuff was all gonna be taken care of when they did the original building. They knew the, they knew the parameters of what the building was, and they knew the limitations, right? And I don't think there was ever a discussion at the time that there was ever gonna be an addition to the building. And I thought maybe one time, they thought they might want to put a trailer or a, some kind of off-site storage facility out there. But I don't think there's ever a discussion about enlargement of the property. And, and how long is the lease for? Okay. Five years or longer than five, you think? Okay. Counselor McLeod.
Not really difficult, but with respect to the comments by my fellow councillors, my first thought when I saw the letter was, I think, I think it's, we should do it. But I've, listening to what Cliff said prior to the, or about the same time the letter appeared, and what maybe Don is suggesting, I'm just, you know, I don't wanna be difficult or different, but I'd like, I think I'd like to see them proceed. But like you were saying earlier, Phil, I'd like to see a footprint of not just the area, but the Capri Motel, I call it the Capri Motel, and respectfully, the property on Chestnut Street, and the property in question with the design, the outline of a design of the addition of the building. I can go up there and see it, but I'd like to see it overhead by looking at a, a design. Right now, I'm in favor of, right now, I'm in favor of the expansion with respect.
Five years, okay. So, what do we want to do? Counselor Don.
I guess my question would be, what's our obligation to our fence that was the initial plan? And we were trying to please homeowners, people that live in that community, and we were going to definitely build a fence, and that would at least stop one barrier for me by thinking about an expansion. But I think our first obligation has to be to the fence that we agreed on, or I thought we were at least thinking about.
We're thinking about it, I think, yeah.
Okay, so I think in that process, I would rather rule on, if I had a choice at this moment, I would, I would vote in favor of the fence first, and that we could proceed further as, if, if, if need be, or if they need a new location, or they need something. But it seems that, I think we need to stick to the first thing, because it still was on my, on the agenda, far as I'm concerned. And then all of a sudden, something new came along. So, there's where I'd be standing. I'd be standing on the fence first. Let's get that up. Let's get that residents thinking that we're doing things in the favor of both the, the food bank and the residents, that we support residents, and that we move in that direction first.
Good. Counselor Hood.
I'll reply to those two comments this way. I think it's correct that we should see a plan of it. I do, do think that. I know this, that if it happened to be an encroachment that required, under the land use bylaw, you would need the consent of the neighbors, or you wouldn't get it. And frankly, I think at this point, the neighbors deserve to be asked, and we ought to take into consideration what the neighbors have to say about it. That's what I think we should do before we make any decision. And there was supposed to be a proponent here to speak to the issue and to respond to us tonight, and they're not here. Well, that's what I'm getting at. So, we, we would be okay, I didn't, I, I'd be in favor of a motion to put it over, get a plan, and also to look into this issue of consent.
Moved by Counselor Hood, seconded by Counselor McLeod.
Can you tell me what the motion is again, exactly?
Well, the motion is, first of all, to get a plan.
Yes.
So that we can see that.
Yes.
And secondly, to...
Talk to the adjacent.
Well, after we get the plan, we'll look and see what the bylaw says in terms of whether there is or isn't an encroachment. But I think we should have the, we should be looking at, the motion should include that we canvass the neighbors as to whether or not, what their feelings are about the project after we have a plan, so that we can show them.
I agree with that, especially the neighbor piece.
Good. Question been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? John Nickerson, Re Lobster License Plate. That frame from, is that the one? Now, how much would that be compared to a regular license plate, your worship?
I have no idea. It's been sitting there since 2013 in my office.
Seating place on file? Seating place on file, moved by Counselor McLeod? Seconded by Counselor Berry, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Municipality of Shelburne, Re Rural Healthcare. I think that's more for information, your worship, than anything else.
I think they can see it.
It's in there somewheres. I've been going to the meetings on a semi-regular basis.
So, let me just say this.
Go ahead.
So, so what basically does it say? Now you're gonna have to answer, because I don't, I just don't know where it is.
They, they want you to join a Facebook group.
Okay.
Essentially.
All right.
And that is, in order to create a, I guess, a place to share ideas, to communicate, they've established a Facebook group, Save Our Rural Healthcare, and they would like to invite all municipal units to get involved with the effort by joining the group.
Okay, so, yeah, so, so now, I'm just gonna say this, and I think everybody at this table understands, we have the residency program here. I think the average is that you retain 20% of them. We're retaining 60% of the doctors out of that program. You will not find a better program for recruiting doctors to the community than that. And it's right here in our community. So, my, we just need to be careful. I think I saw something on social media that said, if you're fed up, show up. And that's just, to me, it's just inappropriate.
Plus, anybody is a...
It's also, they don't all stay in Yarmouth area. Some of them go down shore and offshore.
Yeah, they do, they do.
Plus, we all have an opportunity to do that as an individual.
That's right, yeah.
I wish we lucked it too.
Yeah, good. Thank you. Seating place on file? Agreed, thank you. Royal Canadian Legion, Re Mariners Center rental fee, and what do we do this year, CAO?
Thank you, worship. The, I'm advised that the municipality of the District of Yarmouth has agreed to pay 50% of this fee if we agree to pick up the other 50%.
I'd like a motion. Make a motion, worship, that we proceed to follow previous precedent and do the same.
Moved and seconded. Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Previously distributed, we don't, do we have anything, no additions? We have one in camera. That was, that's distributed, Donnie, in the information package. So, that, that, that would be on?
We'll deal with the water.
Oh, yes. And we'll do the wa, we'll do the...
Before we go on camera.
Jeff, you wanna leave it on for the water utility? Go ahead, water, I'll run the microphones, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, that's good. So, your worship, this is a meeting of the Yarmouth Water Utility, and it's called for the sole purpose of considering and approving, if you agree, the water utility budget for fiscal 2018 and 19. And basically, you have before you a budget that proposes $2,708,000, 200, 2,709,660 in revenues. It is a balanced budget, small surplus, and it includes an allocation of $200,000 to capital reserve. Got that all right, Jerry?
I think so.
And there are, in my view, no unusual items here. The utility ran within its budget parameters. And I make a motion that we approve the water utility budget for the fiscal year and authorize our, our staff to carry it out.
Just a quick comment to support councillor's motion. This is the third year of the budget for the water utility that was previously, previously approved by the UARB. We went through a water rate study three years ago. And in that, we have to provide, and they approve a three-year budget. So, this is just the third year of that budget. So, what we end up doing is, there might be some variances from actuals in the prior years, but we go with the budget they approved, and we, at the end of the year, we write reports and, and justify the variances that we have. So, typically, we'll have a little more input and a little more discussion around the budget. Next year, we will, because it won't be already approved by the UARB. But this is just the third year of the budget that's been approved in our last water rate study three years ago by the UARB.
Moved, moved by the water utility chair, seconded by Counselor, oh, go, it's your show clip. I'm sorry.
So, I made the motion, your worship, to approve the...
No, you're the boss. You're the boss.
Do I have a second, or?
Yeah. Counselor Berry.
So, any questions? There'd be no questions called? Motion's approved. You get that right, solicitor?
Good, all those in favor? Aye, aye. Motion to go on camera?